Okay. We're recording?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay. Town of Edgewood Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting for July 17, 2025 is in session. Roll call. Commissioner West?
Present.
Commissioner Benino?
Present.
Commissioner Reeves?
Present.
Commissioner Rush?
Present.
And I am Commissioner Williams, present.
Madam Chair. Alternate member Ms. Holland had a previous scheduled out-of-town work trip before she was appointed, so she will not be here tonight, but she'll make every effort to accommodate the meetings going forward, so.
Thank you. Okay, now that we've completed number one, we'll go on to item number two, approval of the agenda.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Director Hill.
So I just want to indicate to you that item number eight, the application for preliminary plat for a subdivision, has been withdrawn at the request of the applicant. And well, when we get into matters from staff, I'm going to have a general discussion on on application review at the staff level.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Rush.
I will recuse myself from Agenda Item 7. I'm not directly I forget the word I'm looking for, affected by definition, but I think the situation calls for me to make sure that I have no conflict of interest, so I will recuse myself. And Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Rush.
So on Agenda Item 7, I think there's a typo that has propagated through not only the item number 7, also in the notice of public hearing, the letters, and in the newspaper article. It says that the request is for review and recommendation to the Planning and Zoning Commission for changes in zoning, and I believe that should say that the planning and zoning should be changed to the town commission.
Yes.
Thank you.
And so that'll be in three places, including the I think the newspaper makes the fourth place where that occurs. So it's in Agenda Item 7, it's on page 8 of Notice of Public Hearing. And then it would be in the letters to the landowners and also in the newspaper.
So on the publication, it is correct.
I'm sorry.
No, it's correct on the public notice as well. Oh, I see, I see. It's correct in the first sentence and incorrect on the second.
Correct, correct. I'm sorry, I didn't catch that part, yes. And I, yes, so to probably be more consistent, I said, "Planning and zoning should be changed to town," but it should probably be governing commission, just to be consistent. So Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Rush.
I don't, I don't think that that would negatively affect Agenda Item 7.
I think because the first sentence clearly says recommendation to the governing body, that it implies that, and it can't be, it can't be approved, this is not a decision, this is a recommendation, so it's, it always has to go to the governing body for approval.
Madam Chair. Chair recognizes Commissioner Benino.
With that note by Commissioner Rush, and then the note that we are deleting 8, I would like to recommend approval of the minutes for tonight's meeting, July 17.
Agenda.
Agenda, excuse me, agenda tonight, July 17.
I second the motion.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any nay? Agenda is approved. Moving on to the approval of the minutes from June 18, 2025, Planning and Zoning Commission Meeting. And I'll make one correction under the call to order and roll call. We have Commissioner Benino listed twice, and we are, don't have Commissioner Rush listed.
Okay.
As present.
So we can make a change to the second Benino to be?
Commissioner Rush.
Rush.
I know I felt left out.
Usually you catch that. I just wanted to get one.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Reeves.
I'd like to motion that we approve the minutes from the June 18, 2025 meeting.
With that, with correction as noted.
Pardon me, yes, with the correction that Mr. Rush's name replaces Ms. Benino's name.
In the second occurrence of Benino.
Yes, agreed.
I second the motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nay? Minutes are approved with the correction. Okay, item number four. Acknowledgement of public notice. So we'll do a roll call on the acknowledgement of the public notice. And Commissioner West.
I acknowledge the public notice for the items on the agenda tonight.
Commissioner Benino?
I too acknowledge the notice on, for, the public notice for the items on the agenda this evening.
Commissioner Reeves?
And I too acknowledge the public notice for the items on the agenda this evening.
And Commissioner Rush?
I too acknowledge the public notices for tonight's meeting.
And I, Commissioner Williams, also acknowledge the public notices for this evening's agenda items. Item number five is findings of fact and conclusion of law.
So Madam Chair, Commissioners, you have in front of you a findings of fact and conclusion of law for a final plat approval of the proposed subdivision identified as Los Peñonas Two Limited Partnership. You heard this matter at your last meeting, it was approved. The 15-day appeal period has passed, we received no appeals regarding this subdivision, so it can move forward to finding a fact and conclusion of law. It's pretty straightforward and standard. If you want to take a quick look at it, I did not see any corrections, any incorrect statements on the whereas. The conclusion of law is as such, the motion to approve the subdivision was made and was seconded. All Commissioners voted aye to the motion, the request for subdivision of two lots into 40 lots is granted. It is so ordered.
Okay, Commissioners, we'll do a roll call, or is there any discussion actually prior to roll call on the document?
Madam Chair, I have no further discussions.
We do need a motion and a second.
Motion, okay. All right, so we'll entertain a motion.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rush.
I motion we approve the findings of fact and conclusion of law for the Los Peñonas Two Limited Partnership Final Plat Application.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any nay? Okay, motion's approved. Okay, we'll be moving on to item number six, which is public comment, and this is general public comment. And we have three that have signed up for public comment. First one is Mike Hoy. Are you here for public comment or a comment on one of the items on the agenda?
Yeah, I put it on the notice for number seven.
Number seven, okay, so this is, you can still make a general public comment if you wish. Okay, all right. David Rice? General public comment? No? Okay. Okay. Lee Griegego? Same thing, okay, all right. Any other public comment? Anyone wishes to make a public comment? Yes, if you'll come up to the, oh, the other one, yeah, and I think we've got them switched, I apologize. So if you come to the podium and just state your name.
My name is David Baccadutri. And I live on Duke Road, close to where the zone change is proposed to take place.
Excuse me, Madam Chair, is that my call? I can't really hear very well. It is.
If you can speak, move the microphone closer to you, yeah, that'll help.
Thank you.
Okay, let's try that again.
Matter of being able to read what I have here so far away without putting my nose to the paper, but anyway, I'll try. I just wanted to read part of the zoning ordinance that deals with special use. And the one thing that I guess I'm a bit concerned about is the line here that says, "The town governing body may not grant its own change for the establishment of a special use zone district unless satisfactory provisions have been made." And there's three of those. One, to assure that a compatibility of land uses is maintained in the general area and that the proposed use is not in conflict with the development policies and other elements of the comprehensive plan for the Town of Edgewood. Number two is to preserve the integrity and character of the area in which the special use zone district will be located, and to preserve the utility of property in contiguous zone districts. And number three, the one I focused on the most here, is to assure that the special use zone will not become detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the Town of Edgewood. And so at this time, and it steals with B, the special use, and maybe I'm mistaken, maybe this is somewhere, but each application for a special use zone must declare the proposed use for the zone district and must be accompanied by a site development plan as specified by this ordinance. Now, do we have one of those? I did not see one in the packet, I saw a plan.
Well, we'll go ahead and get to that when we get into the, to the actual item number.
Mm-hmm. Okay, all right.
Yeah, because this is just a general public comment session, so we can't speak about the item number because we haven't gotten to that particular item number yet.
So can I come back up and?
If you're an affected party.
I'm not an affected party.
Okay.
I'll ask one of the affected parties to speak for me then. But anyway, that's all I wanted to say, and I wanted you to be aware of and consider when granting the special use designation.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Rush.
During, during each quasi-judicial proceeding and for each application, isn't there a, an opportunity for public comment in addition to testimony for affected parties?
There is on the agenda.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, just, just, I thought I might clarify.
Yes, thank you. Any other general public comments? Okay. All right, we will move on to our quasi-judicial, quasi-judicial matter.
And I'll read this statement, so this is a quasi-judicial matter, so these will be taken and under quasi-judicial procedure, and there is certification, the public notice of this meeting has been posted as required. This case is being heard under provisions required by the New Mexico Court of Appeals, intended to protect the rights of all parties and their witnesses, and the swearing-in of all parties giving testimony. The applicant, the affected parties, and zoning official and Commissioners will have the right to cross-examine persons giving testimony. Commissioners will provide confirmation of no conflict of interest or ex parte communication.
Okay, and what we will do, as we've done before, is we'll go each Commissioner and confirm no ex parte communication or conflict of interest on item number seven. Commissioner West?
For item number seven, I have no conflict of interest or ex parte communication.
Commissioner Benino?
Item number seven, I have no conflict of interest or ex parte communication.
Commissioner Reeves?
For item number seven, I have no conflict of interest or ex parte communication.
And Commissioner Rush, you have recused.
Madam Chair, I would recuse myself from this procedure, but if it's possible in the procedures, I'd like to be able to sign up for the general public comment section.
That would be, yeah.
This is actually the affected party, but I'll know. I'll know. Yeah. The other one's over there.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Director Hill.
So at this time, you needed, I would, I just advise you to declare the hearing and then indicate that you still have a quorum.
Okay, we are in our quasi-judicial hearing, we do still have a quorum, although Commissioner Rush has recused himself from this here, from this matter. Okay, so at this point, we're going to have the swearing-in of witnesses. Now, these are witnesses that are affected parties, so you received a letter that says you're an affected party.
And the applicant.
And the applicant, please. So if the applicant will come forward, and the affected parties that wish to testify, please stand up also, and Rebecca will swear you in.
Do you swear or affirm under penalty of perjury that the testimony provided for this hearing matter is true and composed with us in your honor?
I do.
Okay, during a quasi-judicial hearing, we have, we have public comment, we also have the information or testimony from the applicant. We will call on the affected parties, but we don't want any comments unless you are testifying. There will be a chance for you to ask questions of the applicant, there will be a chance for applicant to ask questions of the affected party. But in this, in these types of hearings, we request that anyone that's sitting in the audience and not testifying, please remain silent. Thank you.
So Madam Chair, what you have in front of you is a application for a recommendation to the governing body to approve a zoning designation. The applicant is Epcor Water. As owner, Tom Torres is acting as agent. The request is to review the matter and make a recommendation to the governing body for changes in zoning designations for one lot. In accordance with the zoning ordinance 2024-017, Section 24, the property is currently identified as unassigned. Legal description is in township 10 North Range 7 East. Section 33, water utility system land tract and its 0.377 acres. The parcel number is 99312766. The property is fully located within the limits of the Town of Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico, and the applicant is requesting special use zone. The property is currently zoned R1.
Thank you, Director Hill. At this time, we will call the public comment on this issue prior to the testimony of the applicant. So we did have, was it Mr.? Baccadutri? And we have Mr. Rush. So Mr. Baccadutri, did you want to add additional public comments on item number seven?
Yes.
Okay, and you're not able to question the applicant, just so I want to make that clear, because you're not, you're not an affected party. Okay, come on up to the podium. Mr. Hoy?
Point of order, is it possible we could hear from the man, the company that's applying for this course?
This is just a public comment.
We're going through the agenda protocol, and so there'll be public comment first, and then, and then there will be the presentation.
Yeah.
But will we be able to speak after?
As affected parties, you will, yes.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Baccadutri?
Yes, so in regard to the special use clause that states that the commission will ensure that the special use.
Speak into the microphone, because we have to record this, so it is being recorded.
Yes, as far as the special use zoning and the item number three underneath Section 24, this is that you will ensure the special use zone will not become detrimental to the public health, safety, or general welfare of the Town of Edgewood. And I guess it's hard to know if that would be the case without there be some explanation of what the purpose of the zoning change is and what will be done with the property.
So I'll, the purpose of a zoning change is to change the designation of a property within a zone district from one zoning designation to another zoning designation. It's as simple and as straightforward as that.
But what will be done with the property once it's re-zoned?
That's speculative, and it's not backed in evidence tonight, so we can't, we don't know what that would be, because there is no current application.
Okay.
I understand your concern, and we'll try to address that somewhat, but I, quite honestly, from a legal perspective, there is no proposed use, there is current use, and the current use is, is, is my understanding will continue.
Okay, all right. Then I have nothing further to say.
Thank you. Mr. Rush?
Okay, can you hear me? I think so. So I just really had a comment, and I'll try to make sure that I make my comment so that it fits within all the guidelines, but please correct me if I seem like I'm going down a bad tangent. So, so a concern I have with use on Track A, could it possibly cause damage to the water tanks that are on Track B? And that's the concern I have, and that's all I can say on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that concludes the public comment on that, so we will have testimony from the applicant. Mr. Torres, you have the floor. Go ahead and present your testimony for your application.
So the applicant is, Epcor is the owner, and I, Thomas Torres, is agent. I'm requesting a zone change for one lot in accordance with zoning ordinance 2024-017, Section 24. The property is unassigned, legal description is township 10 North Range 7 East, Section 33, water utility system land tract 8.377 acre, parcel 99312766. Property is fully located in Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico. The applicant is requesting special use. The property is currently zoned R1. So what Epcor has done is split the existing property in two pieces to divide the water facility from the existing tower. And so we are requesting special use so that we, so that our facilities, which were zoned in Santa Fe County as R1, all of our sites, were complying with the Town of Edgewood's zoning criteria in order to function as a utility properly in the Town of Edgewood.
Thank you, Mr. Torres. Commissioners, do you have questions for Mr. Torres?
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Benino.
You, currently, the tower is on top of your water towers?
We have two towers, we have a cellular tower on the tank, and we have a Santa Fe County tower on the property so described in this application.
So it's already on Track B?
That is correct.
Okay, and then, so you're just wanting to have that as special use?
Right.
Okay.
More questions?
Madam Chair.
Commissioner West.
The other Epcor properties, how are they zoned? Are you aware of that? Are they zoned R1, or?
Typically, they're zoned R1. The zoning has changed without application from Epcor to Santa Fe County, as the addresses have changed. And so as we review the sites, we're noting what they are today, and we're adjusting them to what the town new zoning changes are. They've been inconsistent with the county.
Right. Thank you.
And I do see under Section 24, special use, the intent includes types of development, but you're not developing, it's already, it already exists, whatever is there is already there.
Correct.
It does state that this zone district provides for types of development which would, which require special consideration because of the magnitude, unusual nature, infrequent operations, questionable impact on surrounding property and others, or other similar reason. So I'm, at this point, I think that's an unusual nature, is what is currently on there, because it's a tower.
It's a cellular antenna on the tank, and there's a communications tower on this property that I'm requesting. property that I'm requesting a zoning change.
Okay. So R1 is absolutely not the appropriate zoning, according to our ordinances.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Benino.
And what is on that tract? How tall is it?
I don't know offhand.
Okay, thank you.
Also, Commissioners, it appears under our same zoning ordinance that I quoted previously, which is special use.
So maybe this is helpful. The site is a utility site. It's a utility site for not just a water company, but for cellular communications and emergency communications.
And to Mr. Torres's point, item number seven, under that particular ordinance, states commercial wireless communication facilities as part of special use. Chair recognizes Commissioner West.
Are you aware, maybe this would be a question for Director Hill, is the Santa Fe Communications Tower currently operative and in use?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, if we don't have any additional questions at this time for the applicant from the Commissioners, we'll begin the testimony from affected parties. Okay, Mike Hoy. Mr. Hoy? And if you'll come up to the podium, and you'll be able to testify, and then you may also ask questions of the applicant, and then the applicant may ask also questions of you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for letting us be here and speaking to you. My concern is first, just like Mr. Baccadutri said, is the special use, I don't believe was ever intended to go to this extreme, what we're about to see happen.
What are you referring to, Mr. Hoy?
I'm not referring to anything, yet.
Okay.
I'm just saying that it was set up so that if something came up, like it is now today, that tower, which we all allowed, all said it was fine, is because it has low frequency, it was good for the ambulances, for the sheriffs, for the police, it helped. If we go beyond that, it isn't going to be for that. That might be added to a tower, but that's not where we're heading in this thing. I would just really appreciate it if you would consider that it's not going to fit the recommendations for special use. It's not safe what we're heading towards. It's too close to residential places. It's not what we moved out here to get out of the city for.
Do you have, you mentioned that it's headed towards something. Can you be specific? Do you have facts that show what is headed, as you say, if this, for this special use?
Yeah. Do they have an application in for that company?
No. There is no application for any use on that property other than what's existing.
Okay, then can I ask a question?
Yes.
Do you have intentions on changing that tower?
No, not at this, I do not.
The people that you're about to lease to?
Let me set something straight about harm. Sadly, we have learned something in floods in Texas, that communication is important. And where we live today in this forest area, we are in danger of a fire, a rapid fire, that will destroy most of the forest that we live in. We're here limiting the communications ability for now, in the future, that is dangerous. We are probably going to lose our insurance because of where we live, and we're going to have to take measures for fire flow, communications, and also in compliance within the area we live. We're going to change the area where we live. It's not going to be the same as it was and we hoped for. It's going to change because of the conditions we live in, and they are drastic, and that is the true danger, not the appearance of a tower.
And this is a tower that's used for emergency services, correct?
No, I'm referring to communications tower in general.
Oh, okay, okay.
Communications in general. We saw that in Texas, that there was no communication, that people were not receiving messaging, and loss of life was the case. That's the danger.
My comment to that would be that I understand what he's saying, but I also understand that there's another position less than a mile away where there are no homes, it would be just as well put there.
Madam Chair.
Pardon me?
I'm sorry, Mr. Hoy. I thought you were finished. Go ahead.
So I don't see the tactic that he's saying, that we're going to lose our insurance and we're going to be in trouble. If we move to another spot in town, less than a mile away, it will work just as fine.
And I don't believe, before us this evening is not a move of anything because the entity that owns the particular item that is on the property is not here, so that we can't discuss anything like that. We can only discuss the request for a special use-
Right.
-change from a residential zone change. That's all we're here to be able to discuss tonight.
Theoretically, if that tower that's there now stays there, there's no reason to change the zoning to it. It's been there for the last 10, 15 years.
But it doesn't fit our residential zoning. As I read in the ordinance-
Yes, ma'am, I understand.
-special use is specifically listed in our ordinance for communication towers. Thank you.
And just for clarification, Mr. Hoy, and I understand your concerns, and those need to be addressed, but they need to be addressed in a different forum, and I'll get to that because there's going to be multiple opportunities to decide what future use is there. But I will say that there are valid legal reasons beyond any specific use why this zone change is necessary, and I will even at some point, I will indicate that it actually could be done administratively under law. So, but we want to try to give the public the opportunity, as we always try to do, to have input on these matters. So again, we have to deal with what are facts and evidence. So the facts and evidence that this commission has to hear is that this property is being utilized for utility purposes, and to be consistent with that current use, the zone change must be compliant with that need.
I understand that, and I have no problems with the way it's being used now. My concern is if it changes to something bigger, more powerful, it's going to have a big impact on everybody in that area, the residents. I live less than, I live 98 feet from the property he's talking about. Any tower that gets any bigger, it causes some problems. There's a number of them.
And I think that's a valid concern, Mr. Hoy, and that concern would have to be addressed at the appropriate time when that possibility is in front of this body. We can only hear what the matter is at hand.
I have no problems with the matter at hand, providing it stays that way. We go and, you change it, that's fine, but if it turns out they tear that down and put something even bigger up, it's too late.
Well, that will not be because of a zone change. That will be because they're coming forward with an application for a development.
That would be another action. So I think you're maybe getting ahead of the process.
I'm trying not to.
Right.
I'm trying to say basically, if you say, no, we're not going to change it, this ends all the problems for the people in the neighborhood, it keeps it safe for the neighborhood, it doesn't run the property values down in the neighborhood, it puts an end to it, and they can go and find another spot, that's all.
And none of us are qualified, or are you qualified, to designate property values? So, and that's something-
I asked the four realtors in this town.
And they did a specific study of your property.
Yeah, it would be an actual-
So they went out and they did comps based on your specific property?
No, no.
Okay, that's all I need to know. So no, if you say no-
What you need to know, nothing's been done, there's not a baseline been done on the property we're talking about, about how effective is that going to get? We didn't do that comp.
And to Mr.-
That hasn't been done yet, and here we are voting on it tonight.
And to Mr. Hill's point, we have to have facts from a qualified source in order to take that into consideration. If we don't have the facts to back up your statements, then it is an opinion.
I understand what you're saying.
This is a quasi judicial, so we have to have the facts that will provide us the actual confirmation of your comments.
Yes, ma'am. Can I ask, do we have a comp about the baseline that they're projecting or doing right now? How much, how much energy is being given off on those, that tower that's up there now?
That probably would be a question for the owner of the tower. Whichever company is the entity that owns the tower, it would not be a question for the applicant because the applicant simply is asking for a zone change on the property. The applicant does not own the tower, nor operate the tower. So that would be a question for the entity that owns and operates the tower.
Point given. But we've never had to ask what the baseline is, what electromagnetic forces are being given off up there to hinder or hurt the people.
And it's a very good question. It's a very good question.
So all of a sudden now, we need facts and figures, but we've had it up there for the last 10, 15 years, and it was okay, we don't need to do that. But now when we come up and ask, you got to come with some facts and figures, Mr. Hoy, and I'm just saying that's fine, I will get them, I can do it. But doesn't the other side have to provide something? Don't they have to come forward?
At the time that there's an action or a request done before the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop the site differently than what is already there in existence, then that would be the time for that.
Madam Chair.
Chair recognizes Commissioner Reeves.
This may not be the appropriate time, so stop me. If I have questions of either the applicant or the affected party, should I hold those questions and wait a minute, or is this the appropriate time? Mr. Hoy, are you, did you want to continue, or would you like to have some more questions?
I just had one question more.
Okay.
If that stays there, that's fine, but do you know for a fact, is that tower going to change?
If there's an application for it, yes.
No, there is no application for it.
I said if.
If there is no application.
If, and at this point, there is nothing, so.
Thank you.
Commissioner Reeves? Commissioner Reeves might have some questions.
I'm sorry, I'm drawing, Mr. Torres. How long has the property currently, how long has there been a tower on it of any kind?
For over 30 years.
Over 30 years, it's been there?
Yes.
I'm asking because I'm clarifying my memory. Was there a tower that was taken off the water tank at some point within the last year or something that we've heard?
The cellular tower is still on the tank.
Okay, so that, that property has had a tower, some sort of communications tower on it for 30 years.
Correct.
Mr. Hoy, how long have you lived and been an affected party to, or an adjacent party to this property in question tonight?
Forty years.
Forty years.
I've lived in that house for 40 years. Ten years, prior to that, I lived north of the town.
Okay.
I've been here 52 years altogether.
So I do not mean this disrespectfully, at all. When the tower was put on that property that you live adjacent to, did you speak up at that point? I realize that the town of Edgewood as an actual town did not exist at that time. Maybe that, there weren't procedures for that, but I'd like to hear some of the history of that.
Howard Cawkins pulled up to my house and told us what was going to happen for the betterment of the town, for, it wasn't a town, for the people in this area, for the sheriff's department, and for the fire department, it'd be a better way to communicate. And I said, Howard, I got no problem with that, and they put it up, as far as I know. I don't think there was applications to, I don't know if they went to the Santa Fe or not, I don't think so. It just happened. But back then, someone could shake hands, and that's the way it happened.
Re-
Now we got to take it step by step, and it just seems like it's not necessary. It could all end real quick.
Madam Chair, I have no other questions at this exact moment.
Okay.
Thank you.
This may, this may help a little bit. In this, in the section 24, special use, there is designated uses, which is item D, and it does list some things. So, and your concern was like surrounding residential, and there is one thing in here, and not that this is ever going to happen, I just want to bring attention to it because there is some designation of feet because of a certain thing. There says fuel wholesalers and storage gasoline or other petroleum products, provided that all facilities should be placed a minimum of 300 feet from any residential structure unless sufficient blast explosion or fire confinement structures are installed in accordance with state regulations. So there are some sections under special use that are for the health and safety-
Yes.
-of residents within a certain radius. So just maybe that will help a little bit. We don't, yeah, again, there's nothing being done on the property, this is only a zone change request, it's not a development request.
I find it, I find it interesting that we're discussing this, and we're not really coming up front and saying what it's all about. And I find it funny that we have, here last week, I thought, I came to a meeting where they were going to have, take a rule or an amendment to the special use, but that got taken off the board. Things, for the last three months, we've come in here and things have changed, and I just find it interesting that these things happen, and we're just trying to live here like anybody else and not cause problems, but not create problems that we have to deal with. That's all I'm saying. Why did they, last week, have, about to have a special use change, they wanted to develop it, and then it got taken off the agenda?
No, it wasn't taken off the agenda, sir. It was, the newspaper falsely reported that there was going to be that item on the agenda. The town never indicated such.
Well, I don't know where the newspaper gets their information from. It's sad that people come in ready, prepared to talk, and it doesn't happen. And in the last two months, it's been postponed, it's been taken off the agenda. What are we doing? We're supposed to be neighbors, we're supposed to be working together, and it sure looks like we're dodging the bullet. Is there anything else going to happen on that property? Not now. You know, come on. You all know what's going to happen.
No, we don't, sir.
Yeah, we're going to get a big 100-foot tower over there.
There's nothing proposed to Planning and Zoning Commission at this time, other than what is on there right now. So we, again, you're assuming something's going to happen. We cannot, we cannot base the decision tonight-
I know.
-on a zone change-
I appreciate it.
On potential, future potential, which we don't know what, you know, that's in more, that's other meetings. And again, I wouldn't watch the newspapers, to be honest with you, I wouldn't watch the newspapers. I would go to the town's site, and they post the agenda and all documents on there before the meeting, so it keeps you completely informed. I would not use the newspaper for my information, that's just my personal suggestion.
It happened, but I'm not even sure that the town's site is completely informative. I was misled for the last two months that it was on, and then we get here, it's taken off. Well, somebody jerked it off of there, I don't know why.
It was never taken off because it was never an agenda item.
Yeah.
I don't know the purpose and the reason.
And applicants can withdraw also. So an applicant, even though they may have been on the agenda, they may choose to withdraw.
They did.
So that can also happen. So it's not the town taking something off, it's the applicant chose to withdraw, which we have one this evening that chose to withdraw, but it's on the agenda, but now we know that it's withdrawn because it was announced this evening early on in the meeting, in the agenda.
Thank you.
So we're trying our best, and we also like to have the public comments and testify.
I'm not blaming anybody up front.
We understand.
I'm not blaming you, but I do want you to keep me in mind when it comes to my health and what's going on or going to go on up there. Because it's going to get to a point where it's too l- Because it's gonna get to a point where it's too late. That's what I'm afraid of.
Yeah. And, and we all share those same concerns, we really do.
All right.
We all live in the, in the area. We all have concerns about everything that comes before us, and that's why we have public comment and testify, testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hoy. Mr. David Rice. And if you'll say your name and also your address, and I apologize, I didn't ask Mr. Hoy to do that.
David Rice, I'm at eighteen Duke.
Thank you. And go ahead and provide your testimony.
So, I would kinda like to counter. This is the old permit application prior that was withdrawn. I understand, we're not suggesting that anything's going to happen with the property. I worked in skilled trades all my life before I was old enough to legally work. Grew up working with my dad, doing all kinds of stuff. There are houses all over the entire nation that are wired with aluminum wiring. It was legal to do that at one point in time. Are we going around wrecking them out? Getting rid of them? No, we're not. They're, they're grandfathered in. They're maintained properly in accordance with how they were built at the time. You can live just fine in a house wired with aluminum wiring. Would I buy one personally? Maybe. It wouldn't stay aluminum wiring. We grandfather properties in all the time. There is absolutely zero reason to rezone this property unless there's intention. There is no reason. That property serves the community up there, and thi- this is effectively a money grab. Do I have proof? No. But you look at stuff, the way, way things work, the way our lives are run, day in, day out. It's, we do things all the time that aren't necessarily legal. We may have the best of intent, and it's, pursuing a zoning change suggests that there's commercial intent. And I know it's speculative. To say anything else would be dishonest. But it's also dishonest to suggest that a zoning change is required for something that exists, and has continued to serve the community. The public service repeater that's up there, it's needed. The suggestion that we need communications, any one of us in here can take the SIM card out of our phone right now, and dial nine-one-one, and you will get an operator. The suggestion that we don't have communications in the area is a bald-faced lie. We can contact emergency services. I've got multiple cell phones at my house that I still use that don't have service connected to them. I can still use them on Wi-Fi. If you move out into this community and you don't have cell service, you're probably not on government insistence and need somebody to provide you with an operable cellphone. You're gonna have a landline if you need telephone service. You're going to have internet brought to your house, whether it be by cable, whether it be brought by satellite. I've looked at multiple properties within Edgewood whenever I was still actively looking to purchase a house. And I had researched, looking into cellphone, directional cellphone antennas that I could put onto a mast and catch a tower that was just enough service to where I could provide internet to my home, in the event that I needed it. You're, you're not moving out here because you want to be looking at the stupid little boxes that all of us carry all the time. And it's, I, I wanna be somewhere where there is no cell service. I, I enjoy being in a rural setting. I'm, it, the suggestion that it, that the rezoning is for anything other than new construction for commercial intent is, it's obscene.
So, I have a question for you. Mr. Rice.
Yes.
Does the current and past use of what is existing on that property meet the R1 ordinance of the town of Edgewood?
What does it matter? It's been there since before
Well, it does matter.
Edgewood was incorporated.
It, it does matter.
It doesn't matter unless there's intent to do something.
It does matter. And I will, I will beg to differ with you on that one.
I would like to know and understand how and why it matters.
Okay. So, it, the ordinances under R1, R2, et cetera, versus Special Use are particular, those are ordinances that we, as a commissioners for planning and zoning, must abide by.
So are you intending to fine?
I can't, I can't answer that question right now. It's a commissioner, it's a forecommissioner, um, both.
If I, if I may ask, are you currently paying fines for your property not being correctly zoned?
So, our properties are not zoned according to the existing town of Edgewood. I intend to take all of our properties to SU, so that we can do commercial activities like remove a tank, replace a tank, paint a tank, have different access, have different security. So, these businesses, these facilities will not stay the same over the years. Especially in Edgewood, we're getting to the age where some of these facilities are gonna change a lot. The older tanks that were constructed are wearing out, and they need to be replaced. So there is gonna be change.
So he's talking about the tank on the property, which is what his.
I, I will concur with that. There's no reason for the property to be rezoned to perform recurring maintenance. Steel tanks.
Madam, I, we're getting into points of law, and so I think a lot of your, sir, respectfully, a lot of your questions will probably be answered in the staff, when I get to staff report, because I will identify the legal justification and necessity, and, and, specific to what this request is.
Oh, I, I can understand that, and I can respect that. But the property is grandfathered in, in place.
So there is.
There is no.
Grandfathered in is not a legal term. And I will discuss what the legal aspect, I'll get into the actual legal definition of what grandfathered in means.
Well, I may not be speaking the correct, precise legal terminology, and I can understand that. But the property exists. You guys aren't fining Epcor, and it's providing a valuable public service through emergency radios. So, there, give me a valid reason why it should be changed that does not
Sure. No, I, I understand, I, I totally understand. I understand.
Recurring maintenance for water facilities does mean replacing tanks. As all of us out here know, our water's very hard, it's very corrosive to steel.
So I, I will get into the, the legal aspects of what, this is a, this is a quasi judicial hearing.
Yes.
Judicial is kinda the operative word.
Yes.
So the law is what the commission has to hear, and testimony has to be based on specifics to what is being heard tonight. And, and we give a lot of leeway, because we do understand, these are emotional issues, and the, and this is where you live. And this is important stuff. And, and so I will be talking about what, you're talking about what may or may not happen in the future. I can discuss what the town is intending to do as to ordinance review and change, which will affect what I think everybody in this room is concerned about. So we're trying to do this in an appropriate and orderly manner that protects people's property rights, all, all parties' property rights, because that's what land use is, is property rights. And so we have to follow legal procedure and, and follow what statute allows and doesn't allow. And, and so there is a proper process for all of these concerns to be addressed. And in my opinion, um, the governing body will be addressing all of these issues, not just for this specific property, but for all properties where this type of, where there is potential development of what your concern is.
I'm concerned with the property being rezoned. I, I'm not sure what you're talking about.
Okay. And I'll, I'll talk about that when we get into staff report, because I don't, I, I, I don't wanna, I don't wanna give my staff report until we're ready.
Well, it's, like I said, and apparently there is something in the background, because I'm talking about zoning.
Okay. Yeah, we're talking about zoning tonight as well.
And there is no reason for the property to be rezoned.
And there is a, there's a, there is a compelling.
Unless there is intended commercial change in the property.
That's not true. I mean, I just, I disagree with you, respectfully, I disagree with you, and I will get into that.
Okay.
Uh, does the applicant have any questions for the testifying party? No? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Rice.
Thank you much.
Mr. Lee Grego. And if you'll state your name and your address.
I'm Lee Grego, I live on twenty-five Belavissa, three hundred feet from the, the tower that exists currently. And I've been there twenty-two years. And all we're talking about tonight is zoning, but nobody's talking about if there's gonna be another tower installed. That's, I think, what everybody here's coming, you know, coming here for. Because if we get another tower, that means that we're gonna increase our, our phones, and, you know, more EMF. That's my concern. Ten years ago, I came down with cancer, and, and living in that same house, with that tower there right, right now that's currently there. If they increase it again, I don't wanna come down with cancer again. So that's my reason for coming here and saying, I don't want the zoning, for, for health reasons, that, you know.
This evening's, um, item is only hearing about the zoning, not about any new tower, no replacement tower, nothing having to do with any change of what's existing on there. This is simply the zone change request.
Correct. But I think everybody's thinking the same thing, what I'm thinking.
But you're at the wrong meeting, that's what I'm, that's what we're saying.
Yeah. That, that's, that would be, if there is an application that comes through for something other than what's existing on the property, that would be the time for, for that, yeah.
Yeah, 'cause I don't wanna argue tonight, you know, 'cause it's strictly zoning tonight.
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's all I got.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. That concludes the affected parties' testimony. Commissioners, do you have any other questions prior to the staff report? I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Okay. Director Hill.
Thank you.
So the staff report is, is very basic, just so you know. And I'll get into some of the, the legal aspects of this. But, um, basically, this is a zone change. And so what has happened is, 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 I think the applicant is correct. The, the town has made a decision, it's in the comprehensive plan, so this is consistent with the comprehensive plan, that properties that are, that are utilized by public utilities and facilities on those properties, the, the comprehensive plan is saying that those properties should go to Special Use zoning. So that's your first compelling use, compelling reason behind the zone change is the comprehensive plan. So the community came forward and said, this is what we want as a community. So that's, that's, that's item one. The property is fully located within the town of Edgewood. Epcor Water did submit a proper application, a complete application. The property is currently zoned R1. The problem with the R1 zoning is that it has been operating on an R1 zoning as technically what is defined under the law as conditional use. In other words, it's kind of, you know, the, the term grandfathered in, the legal term is conditional use. And the condition, as long as the condition exists, the use can exist. But the comprehensive plan says that, hey, it's not residential, it, it, it could never be legally zoned, R1. It doesn't qualify for R1 zoning. So under the law, under conditional use, if a property is not properly meeting that conditional use, which it is not, it's, there is no residence, there could never be a residence on that property because of the size of it. Therefore, technically, the zoning official has the authority to reassign the zoning. I could actually just administratively change the zoning, but I don't think that's good practice. So we're going to ask that we go through the normal procedure and have you make a recommendation to the governing body. And again, as the applicant has indicated, um, any property in the town of Edgewood that is currently being used by a public utility for a facility, we're going to request that that property be changed to Special Use. We actually are, are working, you recently did a land, a subdivision from a different water company that will be, and we indicated at that meeting that they need to change, they, they need to come in and request SU zoning for that facility. So that's consistently what we're trying to do. So this is not special to this particular property. This is, again, trying to be compliant with the will of the community, which is identified in the comprehensive plan. So, and, and again, the public needs to understand, or the, the concerned citizens that, that we've heard from need to understand that this is not a decision being made tonight. This is a recommendation. All zoning changes have to be done by the governing body, by state statute. And so we're, we're following that process. As far as, and, and, and as commissioners, you know, you see this all the time, where underlying zone changes, people wanna know, well, what are you actually doing? And that's not a proper question to ask at a zone change. I'm sorry, it's just legally not a proper question. And it, it's violating the property rights of the property owner when you do that. So, we give a lot of leeway, because we understand these are emotional issues. But under the law, you are charged with, basically, you have to follow the law. That, you are, you have sworn an oath of office, and you made a commitment to follow the ordinances of the town of Edgewood, the laws of the state of New Mexico, and the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the United States does give property rights as a, property rights are actually identified in the Constitution. And if you remove a property right, that is unconstitutional, an unconstitutional taking. So that is, I mean, it actually gets to that basis. So I, I, what I'm hearing is people are saying they're okay with the, with the existing use. And that's all we're saying, is we're just bringing the zoning in compliance with the existing use. And there is a compelling legal reason for that to occur, because, um, I mean, it, it, it.
If I can interrupt you for just a moment. Uh, Mr. Rice, we're done with testimony, so if you'd please.
I'm on intermission testimony.
Oh, okay, so you're just standing there?
I'd like to, I'd like to make a comment.
Well, we're done with that particular part.
Testimony is over. This is, this is a court, you understand, this is a court. So if you go up to District Court-
As you wish.
Okay, so-
Okay, please continue, or Director Hill.
So anyway, I think, I would, I would state, under basic legal land use provisions, that there is a, one, there's a compelling need, there's a compelling determination under the comprehensive plan, there's also a compelling determination under the actual use of the property, and it cannot legally be, legally be used for what it's currently zoned for. As to any other issues, I will address that after this hearing. Because I know there are concerns out there, and they need to be addressed, because I know people are very concerned about what they perceive is happening. And I'm willing to address that, but that's not part of this hearing. And so we, let's, we want to keep it to this, the legal rights of the party, the applicant, so.
Do the commissioners have any questions, of Director Hill or of the staff report?
I do not.
Madam Chair, I do have one question of Director Hill. Director Hill, I noticed that in the comprehensive plan alignment of this staff report, as well as compatibility with surrounding land uses, it speaks a lot about the water utility infrastructure, but it's my understanding that the piece of property that Mr. Torres wants to, for Epcor to change, I understand the zone change, but it actually has a tower on it, right? Presently, so it's like a utility that's not having to do with water.
I would have to defer to the applicant, but I believe there is, I can't answer that.
No question again?
Okay, the question is, I'm just going to read to you from this, it says, "The subject property is currently zoned R1, characterized by single-family residential uses. Transitioning to an SU designation for the purpose of establishing water utility infrastructure is considered compatible, provided appropriate measures are taken to mitigate potential impacts on neighboring properties." And so I understand all that, I just, I was supposed, because the particular piece of property you wanted to change the zoning to has the emergency tower on it.
Correct.
So I thought perhaps that would be mentioned in here, and it's not. Okay, so it's not specifically for water utility infrastructure, it's also for that? Because that tower exists on it?
Correct, it's, it's for the facilities on the land.
Thank you. What's the acreage of that piece of property? Is it, is it less than one acre?
Yes, it's a third of an acre.
A third of an acre, okay.
So commissioners, let's move into deliberation, if we don't have any additional questions for staff or applicant. And I agree with the staff report on the comprehensive plan, there is infrastructure strategy that was, when the comprehensive plan was approved, and the town, townspeople were involved in that, it does have infrastructure strategy. And there are goals that talk about improving our infrastructure. This falls within that, because the applicant mentioned maybe a replacement of the, of the tank that's there. That would be an improvement of the infrastructure for the water. I can't talk to the, about the cell phone, because that is not, this applicant deals with the water.
Okay, I'm confused, because I thought this was for the tract that does not have water on it, water towers on it.
You're, you're correct, but it is a utility, it is a public service utility, it's just not specifically water on this tract.
Okay, that was what, that's what, kind of, is what my original question was about. The current use of emergency towers is not in this.
And it is, it is specific, and SU is identified cell towers as, as part of-
Right, as part of it, yeah, yeah.
I should say, communication towers, to be correct.
Communication towers, yeah.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Reeves.
I have a question for Director Hill. So it's my understanding that, this is a general question, it's my understanding that then in the future, anything considered a utility is going to be, not forced, asked to change to SU, to special use.
Correct.
That is within the town's boundary.
Correct. So generally, SU, just for, you know, just rule of, you know, keep it simple, so the most common use for SU are public buildings, such as this building, this property is SU, schools are SU, churches are SU, certain, I think many warehouses are SU, and then utilities, structures are SU.
Commissioner West.
I think as we're looking at this, it doesn't currently align with the comprehensive plan to be zoned R1. It needs to be brought into compliance for its current use, I mean, the size of the acreage of the property is .377, which is not suitable for any house dwelling. And the public utilities, as far as anything that is zoned SU, the town's intent, from my understanding, is that it will be zoned at a time when deemed necessary, or not deemed necessary, but when the procedures come forth to zone those in the appropriate manner. So I think this, this compliance for a special use is, is appropriate at this time.
I would agree, and we must go by the ordinance.
Correct.
That's the, we have, we have to abide, as commissioners, by the ordinances and how they're written.
Madam Chair, I, I feel at this point, too, that the zoning of R1 is inappropriate for this very small piece of property that has been used for over 30 years in another manner, as a, as a special use manner. So it's appropriate, if we're trying to keep things, get things in order, our house in order, so to speak, for the town and the comprehensive plan, that we go ahead and, that it would be appropriate to move it to this zoning.
So this would, this would be, and Mr. Hill's point, this is a recommendation, not an, so it's a recommendation to approve or, or not, yeah, yeah, so that, just keep that in mind as we move forward.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner Reeves.
I would agree with the other two commissioners, Bonino and Commissioner West, that just spoke that it's not really an appropriate R1 zoning for this property, and that SU would be the appropriate zoning. And since that is the only matter before us, I would think that we could go through with this recommendation.
So it sounds like we align with the comp plan, the current zoning of R1 is not appropriate, because it wouldn't even meet the minimum requirement of R1.
Right.
And we would need to bring this into compliance, so those are the three particular reasons.
And we can identify those under the findings, so-
Under the findings.
We can do that. Although there's no, this is a recommendation, so there is no findings at this body.
There's no findings, a fact, yeah. And I agree with the public welfare considerations for the reliable utility services.
Any other deliberation?
Well, Madam Chair, I would like to just say that I do hear the affected parties' concerns, and I do understand the separation between the legality of what we are tasked as commissioners to do this evening, and their concerns. But I do hear and appreciate everybody that came and spoke this evening, and your concerns are heard. But I feel like what we are tasked with this evening is just a straightforward zone change.
And we can't look ahead.
Right.
Because we have nothing-
That is, that is my point.
We don't have anything before us that tells us otherwise.
Right.
Okay, well, we'll entertain a motion. And again, it would be a recommendation, and you can vote aye or nay.
Madam Chair.
Commissioner West.
I'd like to make a recommendation. I'd like a recommendation for, the property in question here is, the legal description is Township 10 North, Range 7 East, Section 33, Water Utility System Land Tract A. It is .377 acres, parcel number is 99312766. The property is fully located in the Edgewood, Town of Edgewood, Santa Fe County, New Mexico. The applicant is requesting special use, I request it, or make the recommendation that the property is currently zoned R1, and I make the recommendation to be changed or to special use.
And do we have a second from commissioners?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any nay? Okay, the recommendation to approve.
Thank you, are we out of public hearing, Madam Chair?
We, yes, we are out of public hearing.
Okay, so now I can talk about the future.
Okay.
So let me talk about what the next step is for the people that spoke tonight. There's a recognition that the existing cell tower ordinance that the town currently has is inadequate to protect the concerns that were expressed tonight. So what you have heard in the newspaper, and what you may have heard is that, and the commission is in, in desiring to rewrite the cell tower ordinance, so that we can provide better protections for where cell towers, or communication towers are built. And so the first step for that is a task, task force, or a technical advisory committee to review current, other, other cell tower ordinances in other communities, look at federal regulations, and what we have to do to be compliant with federal law and federal communication law, and bring forward an ordinance that works to kind of find that balance. As the applicant indicated, there is a compelling public need to have good telecommunications, and there is also compelling public need to make sure that we're protecting the integrity of neighborhoods. So we're trying to write an ordinance that balances those two concerns. This commission will be charged with making, the first hearings of that ordinance, so that, that recommendation can also be moved forward to the governing body. So all of the concerns that we heard tonight will appropriately be heard in that process. Again, so we do hear you, there is going to be chance for you to come forward and address how that ordinance is going to look. It's not going to be quick, and so nothing's going to be happening, as far as, we will not accept any application, in my understanding, from the governing body, is there will be no applications moving forward until the new ordinance is in place. So nothing is happening now, nothing's going to happen until all of these concerns are heard and addressed, and a new ordinance is written.
And those are public meetings?
Yes.
And they will be posted on the town's website? So if you, if any of the public wants to attend, they may do so.
Okay, thank you. All right, so having-
Okay.
So that's, I'm doing matters from staff, I'm already there, if you're okay.
Oh, okay, because item number eight was withdrawn by applicant.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, so, yeah, the, Madam Eight was withdrawn at the, at the request of the applicant, and, so I just want to indicate, and I, and I want to, this is not specific to any matter, but I want to bring the commission's attention, I need my notes. Well, I'm going to bring your attention to the zoning ordinance, I mean, the subdivision ordinance, here we are, to the subdivision ordinance, and I want you to go to page 18 of the subdivision ordinance. And I'm going to draw your attention to Section 10, B, 3, A, B, and C, where it says contents of final plat. So it says, disclosure of ownership interest and appointment of agents. Yes?
Sorry, can you give us a moment to get to that?
Yes, it's on page 18 of the subdivision ordinance.
18.
I'm on 18, but I'm trying to find what you were talking about.
Okay.
You said section.
It's section, it's Section 10, which is requirements for submittal of final plats, Paragraph B, contents of final plat, number three, disclosure of ownership interest and appointment of agents, and then items A, B, and C.
Okay.
Are you finding it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so item A says, "True and correct copies of all current deeds or other documents showing any legal or equitable ownership interest in the property proposed to be subdivided." Do you have any questions as to what that means? In other words, if I go over, Mr. Rush, if I go to your lot and say, you know what, I like your lot, I think I could make money dividing your lot up, I'm going to request a subdivision on your property, Mr. Rush, I think you would have an objection to that.
Correct.
I think you would prefer that you make that request as the property owner. So all this is saying is, the request has to be, you have to show that you own the property, if you're going to request a subdivision. And we're done, you know, so, Mr. Torres, you are dismissed.
Mr. Torres.
The hearing is over.
Apologize.
So-
I'm assuming you're talking about a warranty deed?
Well, it can be, it can be a warranty deed, it could be a quitclaim deed, it could be a special, a special purpose, there's different types of conveyance of ownership.
It would have to have the county or the seal on it, correct?
Well, it has, not necessarily.
Not necessarily, okay.
I mean, it should be a recorded deed.
Should be recorded.
But, yeah, typically, that's what the case is, but-
A real estate contract would not-
A real estate contract identifies deeds from both, both from the seller and the buyer. So if you are buying a property, for example, it's a good question, so if you are buying a property on a real estate contract, and I'm going to get into the detail of that, I'm a little bit ahead of myself, but I'm going to get into that. Let me go ahead and go to item B here, "An affidavit from each person or party thus identified as having an ownership interest other than the named applicant, affirming under oath that the person or party authorize as the named applicant to proceed before the commission on behalf of that person or party." So if there are multiple owners in a property, all owners have to affirmatively sign an affidavit or an oath that they are giving that applicant permission to seek that application. Okay, and then C, "A written appointment of agency signed by each owner of the property, appointing as their representative anyone who seeks to appear on behalf of the owners before the commission, or otherwise assist in the preparation of information concerning the proposed subdivision of the property." I think the word proposed is critical here, because even though we're referring to the contents of the final plat, there has to be a proposal at some point. And so at the state of proposal, at the state of application, any party that has an ownership interest in the, in the property, has to affirmatively state, give permission, that the application, the applicant has, the individual identified as the applicant- the applicant has, the individual identified as the applicant has permission of all the owners, and if there is an agent representing the owner, they all also have to affirmatively acknowledge and, and give permission that that agent be allowed to proceed.
So we need a clear paper trail for every.
We need clear documentation that this has occurred. Okay? So we, we have a couple of matters that we have recently received where this is clearly not, we, we have real concerns that this isn't even, this is not complied with. And so we don't even want to bring something forward. As you know, we've been trying to get better at, at getting these things addressed at the application stage before they even get to you. So if you look at an applicant, so if we see an application and it looks like, well, the applicant doesn't even own the property. Property's owned by an entity, and that entity needs to have either a, if it's owned by a corporation, there has to be a, a corporate bylaw or some kind of notification that the corporation has had a meeting to give authority to that individual to act as the applicant.
That could be even in their meeting minutes.
It could be in, yes, and that's typically what it's going to be in, is in, is in a corporate meeting minutes.
But if it's something like a family trust.
If it's a family trust, then whoever is the trustee of the trust needs to sign a statement saying they're giving this person permission to act as the applicant.
Okay.
Now, the case that Ms. Garcia talked about, where there's a real estate contract, so if you're doing that, then the person who's selling the property under a real estate contract, as well as the person that's buying the property under the real estate contract, they both have equitable interest in the property. So both parties are going to be required to submit proof, assigning not just the applicant, but also any agent involved. Does that make sense? It makes perfect sense to us. And this is what's really important. So if you look at the last paragraph under Section 3, it says, failure to make full and truthful disclosure of the matters addressed in this subsection shall be deemed a material misrepresentation and shall, in addition to any other civil or criminal penalties provided by law, result in denial of the proposed subdivision. So our, our job as staff is to head that off before it gets to you and somebody, now we say, oh, sorry, you just committed a misdemeanor and we're going to have to prosecute you now. So we don't want to, we don't want to get to that. We want to be able to stop these before. So this is why you're seeing, I, I, so we would, if an applicant, we would ask for withdrawal of that application, or we would say, you know, you need to come in and, and, and complete the application because it's not complete. So we can't, we're not even, going forward, we will try to stop them before they even get on the agenda. But, just so, just so you know. So the other section that I'll draw your attention to is on page 22.
May I ask a question?
Yes.
So, so I suppose what I expect to see, I think my mic is dead, or maybe we turned it off. So I would expect to see in your staff report that says that you've.
Identified proper ownership interest, yes.
Yes, okay. So that's my expectation.
Yes.
Okay, good.
And I don't know that you need to see all the documentation.
No.
As long as we're, as long as we're giving in the staff report that we have reviewed the documentation and in our opinion, it complies with.
Because that's your.
Now, if somebody comes forward and disputes that, then you're going to have to make a finding. Because somebody could say, no, I own the property, and somebody could come forward and say, no, I own the property, I have an equity interest in it. And then there's a, you know, I mean, then you may have to make that determination as a factual dispute.
And does your office keep all the papers on this? Or you scan it and it's digitally kept?
We, we keep it digital.
Okay.
Both, actually, yes. So I want to also draw your attention to, on page 22, there is Section 15 where it says And I want to draw your attention to number four, under Section 15 penalties, item four. It says, any owner or agent of the owner of any land located within the plating jurisdiction of the town who transfers, sells, agrees to sell, or negotiates the sale of the land by reference to or exhibition of, by, or other use of a plat or subdivision of land before the plat has been approved as provided in this ordinance and recorded in the office of the county clerk shall be guilty of a misdemeanor. Upon conviction, the owner or his agent shall pay a penalty of $100 for each lot transferred or sold or agreed or negotiated to be sold. And then you can't use a description and meet some balance. So basically, and so we, just, just read that, understand it, and, and the town also can enjoin the transfer sale of agreement by action. So if they try to sell a lot before the subdivision plat has been approved and recorded, that's basically fraud. And it's a, it's a, it's a criminal misdemeanor, and so there's serious repercussions to doing that. We don't want to ever get there. What we'd like to do is make sure that we're, we're, we're not getting to that point. So I just want to indicate to you, we have another matter that has been brought forward, and there has been, in our opinion, I don't want to get into the detail of it, but representation to sell properties based on a plat that has not been approved. I think it's unfortunate, and I think it's, we're going to deal with it. Okay?
And that, that's within the town's boundaries, that situation?
Yes.
I have reason for asking.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
So, so anyway, I just want you, this is something that we're, we've, we've become very highly attuned to at this point, and so we're going to make sure that, that, that is something that we're, the first thing that we look at. Because if you look at the application itself, it says name of applicant. So going forward, we're going to say, okay, applicant, you have identified yourself as the applicant, you own the property. Show us how you, proof that you own the property.
So are you using the zone change checklist still, or?
We're going to revise, we're going to be revising that because it needs to be more speci, yeah. It, it needs to be directed, yes.
Almost a checkbox for every single.
And it doesn't, yeah, and this is internal.
Yeah.
It's not a checkbox that we're going to give to the applicant.
No, no. It's just make sure that.
This is something we're doing internally.
Internally, you have everything that you need, or you can tell the applicant, we still need this.
Yes. Because if we give it to the applicant, they don't.
It's confusing.
Yeah. And that's why we have the pre-application review. And that's why the law requires the pre-application review. And we've been remiss in some cases. The applicant comes in and says, no, I'm good, I'll just, here's my application, just, you know, get it on the agenda because I know you guys will, you know, do what you need to do, whatever. Anyway, that's, we're, we're trying to be upfront with the applicants now and say, okay, we can't move your application forward until it's complete.
Director Hill?
Yes.
Thank you.
Good.
You know, there's some other things I see that could also be included.
Like, for instance, I was going to ask the question if, because there's, there's requirements in, in the subdivision that say, hey, you know, if there's historical landmarks, or if there's significant trees, are they protected? Well, we don't know that.
Right.
So we have to ask you that.
Right.
But, you know, so, you know, I kind of feel like I'm abusive always asking so many questions.
No, I think we're.
So if you guys have a way of communicating that to us.
Sure.
Those things, some additional things, I think it's very good.
Right.
I would agree. Yeah.
So I think we're always trying to up the game a little bit, so, I mean, quite honestly, we're, we're trying to protect the rights of the property owners on both sides of these issues as best we can. But as you know, property rights are property rights, and I know people think that I want to tell my neighbor what to do, and to a certain extent, you can, within the law, but beyond that, you really can't. So if a, as you know, I mean, and you, and you were at the training at the New Mexico League of Zoning Officials, where basically if you meet all the criteria, you have to be approved by law. The courts say that. The law says that. So you don't, you don't have a, you don't have a, you don't get to say, well, you know, it's not very popular, therefore, I'm not going to approve it. That, that's not legal. And I know it's tough, and I appreciate all of you taking the time to go to that training, to understand it, to hear what we say, to give us recommendations. You all have come back with recommendations on, on how we can maybe do the, make the ordinances better. So I, I appreciate that, and we, I, I appreciate you guys and what can work together to make this better for everybody, so.
Director Hill?
Thank you, yes.
If I may, make two points. One, I was, I was curious if you thought anymore, if we, if we have an application and we make a change to a master plan, you know, what we discussed is that we have to document that. I was curious if you had thought anymore about how you're going to do that? I don't know if you write a letter to file?
I.
Or how, how you document those changes?
I think there has to be, you're clear, clearly, there has to be some documentation and acknowledgement that this action has affirmatively changed the master plan, but that doesn't occur until after the action is taken. So, okay. So the question could be asked, will this, by, so if somebody came forward and said, well, will this request change the master plan? By definition, yes. And that's what we've learned. That's what the courts have said.
Right.
And so by definition, yes, this will change the master plan. But the courts have also said, master plans are conceptual, and the, and the, and the, you know, the, the jurisdiction has a right to change that, to do those changes, so.
And so in our last meeting with the attorney then, in the training session, as I understood it, that that could be, if they're changing up something within it, it's just simply an amendment, is it not?
Yeah, it's just an amendment to the master plan with an, with the understanding that master plans are conceptual and are going to be constantly under change. Now, the issue is, like, if you're requesting something that is wholly inconsistent with the master, you get in this chicken and egg situation where, well, do we need to modify the master plan first? So I think that's, that, that's the tough, and I think that's where you, as commissioners, have some leeway. And, I mean, there, there are actually items that you can say, in my, I have to just make a judgment call here. And, and I think what the courts have said, that's your prerogative.
So, so my other, my other point, you know, we've kind of created a new procedure that when we're, we're approving something, I forget the correct term that we were doing, but we would each acknowledge.
We do a, yeah, we do a finding, yes.
Okay, so, I do, I do find that a little bit cumbersome, that each, you know, each commissioner having to say, I acknowledge it. I was wondering, could, could we do a vote on it? Would it?
Yes, I think you could, you could vote on a whole, I think. And I think, I think it depends on the case, too, to a certain extent.
Did we have one change that was in there, and that's why we decided to go to each one of them? Because we couldn't vote as a.
Well, we, we did it with the Campbell Ranch, and there was about 20 of them, and then there was another one, there was about six.
Right.
And, and so, you know, we'd go through each one. I mean, I think it was good to, we review each one, make sure that we all understand the proper terminology and how it applies, but I think instead of each person having to say, you know, I blah, blah, blah.
I think we can do, we could do them as a whole, as long as.
Yes, yes.
Everybody is comfortable.
Yes.
With the detail in, in each of them. It's kind of like, I don't know if you've been to the legislature, if you've ever been to Congress, where they do a, waive the reading of the bill? Because the law says, okay, we're going to, we're going to review this bill, and so it has to be read. So it could take hours to read the bill. So the standard process is, Mr. Speaker, I make a motion that we waive reading of the bill. And so there's, yeah, we've agreed to waive the reading of it because we've all, we've all agreed to it, and this is just vote yes or no on it, so.
But there are going to be times that those bills, in that case, not ours, need to be read out loud.
Exactly. This is your, if, if one of you says, no, I think we really need to look at the, this item, or this set of items, or all of the items, then, then we would, you, you can vote whether to do that or not. It's like when you get into recusal situations, I don't know if you know you have the power to remove a commissioner if you feel they have a conflict?
That just opened the can of worms. I was going to say, don't, don't beat me if I ask to go through those things.
No, 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 no. So what, what happens, this is specific to conflict. So if, so say, say somebody says, well, you know, I, I, I don't have a conflict of interest, and I've had no extratation communication. Now, it is my, it is my mother-in-law's application, but I can be really impartial on this. So I'm going to go ahead and hear this matter. You, as commissioners, can say, point of order, we feel that that's probably not appropriate, and we're going to take a vote, and we will force you to recuse yourself from this matter. So you do have, that is an authority that you have.
Okay.
I don't, very rarely, I've only seen it once in all of my experience in, in being on the governing body and being on planning and zoning commissions, where we had to vote to remove a sitting.
Well, that percentage is good, then.
Remember?
Yeah.
So, anyway, that's, that's just matters from staff. So, again, we do have, we, we have created a technical advisory committee to look at the cell tower ordinance. We've created a technical advisory committee to review solid waste, because we're going to, now, this is not something that you need to be concerned with, solid waste is, is an administrative matter, not a land use matter. But I just want you to be aware of that, so. So, I am done.
Okay.
I stand for any questions.
All right. Well, we apologize, Rebecca, if you haven't been receiving your texts or if we haven't responded.
Yeah.
We, we'll all do better, including me.
I haven't received any of them.
Well, that's not good at all.
No.
And Rebecca, Mr. Rush said that he is having issues with his cellphone, so that would explain, yeah.
But I, but I think I'm not just so special. I think Mr. West was having some of the same problems.
Right.
So, yeah, so we need to figure that out. Just one final point that I will make. As you know, I was pointing to the Subcommittee for Standards for the Wildlife Mitigation Task Force.
Yes.
And so I'm, I'm, I, I did actually, I gave them a training on land use 101, because they're, they're, none of them are land use people.
Right.
So I, I gave them a training on land use, which I think was incredibly, they, they seemed to really, really appreciate it. I don't think they understood all of the nuances, but they understood the basics. But I think some of what we heard tonight regarding wildfire mitigation, that the more I hear, the more I get engaged in this, the more concerns I do have as to how this is going to impact our community. I will tell you that I think if the standards go where I think they're going to go, I'm just going to say this, I mean, just quite frankly, I think there are two members of.
There's no other way to say it, I don't think.
There are two members of this commission that are going to be looking at spending a significant amount of money to stay in their homes.
I know, just for my storage units, which I consider, I'm on the prairie, right?
Yeah. Well, the prairie is not the, it's, it's the forested areas that are going to be.
Except that I was just.
I, I'm not saying that you're not subject to fire, I'm just saying.
No, no, what they told me, because I'm in an insurance renewal time.
Right.
That it's brush fire. And I thought, well, then, if you do forest fires and brush fires, you've covered all of it, New Mexico.
So, yeah, so they're just, everybody's saying, move to Albuquerque, and you'll be, you'll get insurance.
And I have to tell you, from personal experience, it's already starting.
It is.
Um, our.
Our business insurance was very, very challenging to, to deal with.
I will tell you that there are, there are certain types of housing in rural communities that are going to be outlawed. And I don't know, and because they're not, you cannot retrofit them.
Yeah.
So, Director Hill, I remember you made similar statements previously, and you named a few states, but it seemed odd to me that it would be applied just to those specific states. It seemed like there were states that were not included that should have been included.
There are, they are. In fact, it's all, it's all western states, pretty much, quite honestly. Oregon is going through some significant review of this, as is Montana. So, it's not ju, I mean, they specifically said at the meeting, California, Arizona, New Mexico, "We may have unique needs," but they are also looking at Oregon, Utah, Colorado, all of the mid, all of the mountain states and all of the western states.
So, it's a national issue, and so they should be talking about it at federal level.
I think ultimately, the kind of the consensus is that it's going to be similar to FEMA floodplain insurance, that there will need to be some kind of federal secondary insurance protocol for these designated areas, just as you're, if you're in a designated floodplain, you can get FEMA insurance.
Right.
Which is not your primary insurance, but it underwrites to where the regular hazard insurance companies will come in and say, "We'll cover up to this level. Federal will do this," so.
Well, and even more and more insurance companies are adding multiple, multiple items that they don't cover. The exclusions list is getting very extensive.
Right.
So, it's been happening.
So, what, just so you know, what we're looking at is a certification process, where you can go and you can get your property certified as fire resistant. Now, what we're looking at, what does that entail? I think the given right now is going to mean Class A roofs, it's going to mean defensible space, it's going to mean...
Which is, I think it's...
Well, that's, that's to be determined, and so, yeah, there's standards for that.
Yeah, they're talking about the footage of...
And so, and it's not, I mean, it can, depending on where you're at, it can be onerous, but it can also mean no wooden siding, secondary structures, no wooden fencing, no wooden siding on your house, and then protection, vent protections for fire ash. So, there's, there's gonna be a checklist of things that you're gonna have to do, and now, okay, you're certified, you know, there'll be an inspector come in and say, "Now, you're certified." And so, now, the insurance industry will say, "Okay, you've got your certification, and we're gonna go ahead and..." Now, what the concern is, they're gonna say, "Well, if only one house out of 15 in this neighborhood is doing this, that may not be enough. We may need to have 80% of the houses in this neighborhood certified." So, I, we don't know, this is what we're, this is what we're, these are the actual conversations that we're having right now, so. And it's not speculative, I mean, this is like real stuff, so.
So, and I, I'll venture into this territory, but I doubt, I'm pretty sure you haven't talked about it, but in California, they just basically took over all the land in the Palisades. The state did.
Well, they did it, they declared it a fire mitigation area, yes.
Right, so now, the property owners are kind of out, I mean, in simple terms, the property owners are out.
There's two aspects. So, there's existing houses that you're going to have to retrofit to meet the standard, and then there's gonna be standards for new, new development. New development, no-brainer. You have to go in and do this. What do you do to retrofit existing? So, if we can contain that to somewhat a realistic level, it's gonna be expensive. A Class A roof is expensive, there's no question about it. They are, fortunately, they now have identified a certain TPO roof, so if you have a flat roof, you can get a, you can get a Class A roof now, before you couldn't. And I don't wanna get into the nuance of that, but, but, but that's gonna be, that's a no-brainer that the Class A roof is going to be a requirement. What does that mean? It means different things to different people. You do understand that manufactured homes cannot be re-roofed. They cannot be fireproofed. Unless you have an engineer come in and design it, which would cost more than...
The home is probably worth it.
Than it's worth.
Sure.
So, people who live in manufactured homes are, I don't know what...
Real challenge.
What we're looking at is creating some kind of replacement program, maybe subsidies through the state, where they can replace that manufactured home with one that is certified, because they're, they do now have certified manufactured homes that you can buy, but they're, you know, this isn't cheap. This is expensive stuff.
Is it possible at all to get grants that, you know, for example, my in-laws, they owned a home, a cabin, all wood, up in the mountains of Mount Taylor. And one summer, well, that spring, they were approached, that there was this team coming through those mountains that would do some fire mitigation.
Yeah.
And they did take out...
Defensive space, don't you?
They did a really good job of it.
Yeah.
You know, is it possible for any kind of grants, so where we can help people...
Well, the Soil and Water Conservation Districts currently have money for that. So, the, yeah, there's a, there is a process for the defensible space.
But you have to go through a seminar for that, to get that money.
Yeah, so, I mean, and you have, and you have to pay for it and then get reimbursed. So, you know, you have to have the means to be able to do, to do that. Class A roofs are totally different. Now, you're talking about potentially 40, 50, 60, 70, $80,000 that you come out of pocket. And, yeah, that's, that's, you may get like a $7,000 tax credit, but that's not gonna...
Is there, is there any, has there been any discussion as to timeframe, you know, any at all?
No, no. I mean, there is a sense of urgency on this.
Yeah, I'm sure there is.
Because the insurance industry, I can, I mean, I don't wanna get into my perception, because I could be wrong, but my perception is that the superintendent of insurance and the representatives from the insurance industry that are at the meetings are under, they're all under a lot of pressure. And OSI doesn't want insurance companies to leave the state. Insurance companies do not want to lose money. I mean, this is what it all boils down. California was like, is tipping, I mean, it's clearly the tipping point. That's billions and billions of dollars. You know, we're all pay, we're paying, we're all paying for that.
We all will, yeah.
So.
Yeah. Well, we're paying for, even for the last 10 years...
Yes.
Of disasters.
Yes. Oh, yeah, we gotta reimburse them for what happened, yeah.
We're paying for that, yeah.
And if, and if there's a federal program, just like FEMA, we're still all paying for it. I think the thought is, this is a, this is a nationwide, like, you're correct, this is a nationwide social issue that has to be borne by everybody. We can't just place, put it on people who live in these identified areas. We have to be able to mitigate that. Now, I think at some point, you're gonna say, "Okay, it's gonna be really expensive to go live in these areas because of these," I meant, really expensive, but it's gonna be more expensive, I should say. So, but you should know this going, you know, going up front, you know? You know, the rule of real estate is caveat emptor, buyer beware, but you need to know what those hazards are when you buy the property. This is a hazard that's being imposed upon you, a cost that's being imposed upon you. So, it needs to be, you know, so, but here's the other side of the coin. If I live in an area that's not in a fire mitigation area, I know my interest is gonna go up, but I shouldn't have to be like, I shouldn't have to put in a Class A, do all of this stuff. You should have to do that, because you're in that area. I mean, so it's, it's...
You're just going forward. All new construction across the country has to have that roof.
All new construction will probably be Class A roofs. Windows are gonna change, gonna be more expensive. They came up with this novel thing in Montana, and I thought it was, we all think it's kinda goofy, but it, so they're replacing all their wood siding with concrete siding. It looks like wood siding, but it's concrete. And they go, "Oh, it's cheaper, so we're building cheaper houses." So, it's actually saving you money to do this.
Is it really cheaper?
No.
It's cheaper than wood.
Okay.
If you're doing a, I mean, if you're doing upscale...
If you're actually doing real wood, it's cheaper than real wood.
If you're in Montana, building a million-dollar house, it's cheaper than wood.
Okay.
Okay? If you're, if you're, you know, if you're a working person, you know, a middle-class person, and you're buying an average house, it's not gonna save you any money. But we build, we do a lot of stucco, which is already a concrete siding.
True, true.
So, Mr. Hill, in all this discussion, some of it is under the assumption that people have, have to have insurance because they have a mortgage.
Yes.
So, there's gonna be some people that don't have a mortgage.
Right, if you, yeah, if you're a cash buyer, you can self-insure. If you wanna self-insure, you self-insure, yeah.
But that impacts the neighborhood, like you were saying. And so, what, what are the thoughts along those lines? Are you guys gonna try, you think they're gonna try to find people?
That's a, that's a really good question, and I will bring that forward.
Yeah.
That is a good question.
Yeah.
Because they'll say, "Yeah, so what? I'm not gonna have insurance, because I own the house."
Right.
You can't penalize somebody for being able to own their own house.
Well, no, but you may, but you may still require that they meet the certification standards. That's a, and a lot of this is gonna, so, a lot of those type of people, not those type of people.
I am one of those people.
Right. A lot of, a lot, and not so much here, but a lot of high-end housing like that are in HOAs. And so, that requirement, the defensible space, the Class A roofing, all that stuff will be required by the HOA. So, if you're in, and this is, so that's a big part of this, is what HOAs going forward are going to be part of, players in this. But a lot of, a lot of where we're at is just, you know, are not subject to HOAs, so that's gonna be...
That world is so complicated.
So, anyway, I promised Rebecca to get out of here before 8:00.
Yes.
I failed miserably.
So, motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Any nay? We're adjourned.